You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call this September 26th, Meeting of the Board of Fire Commissioners. This is a special meeting because of the time change, 4:30 PM. The first order of business is approval of the August 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. Committee reports, we have one vacancy right now due to a retirement from Captain Petrosino. We have 13 captains that have taken the test and will be proceeding on to the next venture, the oral exam. And that's it we have on for personnel at this time. Finance, Commissioner Wickham?
Oh, I'd like to say we, okay, so Chief, we have the approval for the 16 fire, right?
For the 16 EMTs. So that line item, that contingency line item is a contingency line item that resides within our budget currently?
Right.
And then we have to move that money into the correct lines. So salaries, replacement, vacation?
So I just, I just want to say this was budgeted for us?
Yes.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's not like we're going to continue to see looking for money.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to perform a motion that we approved this for the Board of Finance agenda for Monday, September 30th. Would be $1,838,104 to wages and salaries, overtime, vacation, holiday pay, replace sick, uniform, clothing allowance, and benefits.
Is that a motion?
Yes, I made a motion, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Yes.
This, this 1.8 million, is that calculated on 12 months or nine months?
It is calculated on 12 months.
12 months, full year.
My understanding is that even though we're not using it for the upcoming revaluation year, so not to cause issues and then they'll use that to kind of smooth the, you know, whatever's left over goes into, you know, the...
Yes, I do. Yes, I know where that goes.
Chief, was the benefits thing part of the...
The benefits are not calculated, the money's in the contingency, but that's going to move into outside of our budget.
Right, okay.
Director Finch has already prepared his letter and sent it to Board of Finance with everything. So we had a lot of back and forth this week to check everything.
Mike, the benefit, the benefit side doesn't fall under our budget?
It doesn't fall under our budget, yeah.
It's been under HR. Okay, any other questions on discussion?
We, we, oh, go ahead. No, go ahead. We're going to vote on it.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so voted. Do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, now Chief, you also emailed us today about the apparatus fund replacement plan.
Yeah, so during the budget process, we presented our vehicle replacement plan. And we had originally asked for a million dollar appropriation. And the, I mean, I've been reminding people pretty much, and I think Chief O'Hearn probably did it before I did. I've been chief and I'm in my ninth year now. Pretty much every year that I presented our capital budget, we talked about the apparatus, reminded people that we replaced four major frontline pieces of apparatus, all from 1997. They were all purchased from 1997 to 2001. So we're in that period. There, two of them are over 28 years old, one of them is over 25 years old, and one of them is just at 25 years old. So the unfortunate part is, you know, what we're trying to do is we're trying to spread it out a little bit, but there's a bunch of stuff that's causing us issues right now. We're all aware of the price increase in apparatus. It's not, it might not increase as fast as it has, but it's not going to decrease. The other problem is the timeframe. And the timeframe doesn't seem to be slowing down. I would have figured by now it would have been a little bit more, but I just talked to the, for instance, our ambulance representative today. Their factory's, you know, they were saying two years, now we're up to two and a half years.
Jeez.
For an ambulance. So we won't have to actually expend money until delivered. We can't sign a contract without an appropriation. So, and we've always known, just because of the large cost of the ladder truck, that it may be one of those purchases that Jim wants to roll into a bonding. I'm not the finance guy, so I don't want to talk too much about the, you know, how all of that works, because we'll be discussing it on Monday night and they'll make their decision. But my job is to present the plan, what we need, the prices based on the information I can gather from the industry and my fellow chiefs who are getting deliveries and/or have just signed orders and that kind of stuff. So this is the, and Engine 1, of course, we, or the replacement for Engine 9 is purchased via a purchasing cooperative, which means the bidding requirements called Sourcewell. We worked with our vendor, we got the, this truck is a bare bones type bumper, and as you can see, it's 1.1 million dollars. I mean, it's not a cheap, there's cheaper, but cheaper doesn't last. We've had that experience. The truck, its replacement, is not the oldest one of the group, but it was one of the cheaper ones that we bought, and I put a lot of money into it last year. So, you know, it's pay me now or pay me later type thing. So this is, the other part is we've been purchasing the brand apparatus, which is Pierce, keeps parts and everything kind of within that same group. So our mechanic knows what to work on, where to source parts, that kind of thing. So what we also did, again, I tried to spread it out a little bit, because we know that, you know, our new Engine 1 will come in, hopefully, it's, we ordered it two years ago, it's not due until next November. That'll come in, we'll, in the meantime, use the current Engine 1 to replace Engine 9 that we're using now, the older one. And then when the new one comes in, that one will become a spare, and then we'll start handing them down to replace some of the volunteer units, as the board had voted on when we purchased Engine 5. Because those, the truth is, those engines got a lot less wear and tear based on, you know, reality. So that's, that's the plan. The other thing is the heavy rescue truck. That was purchased in 2001. It is a, or I'm sorry, it's in 1999. It was, you know, a custom-built heavy rescue truck when the volunteer company was very active. It served its purpose. It's in pretty decent shape, so we might be able to get some money back for it. But the mission for it has kind of changed to be more of our large equipment carrier for those rare calls, but, you know, it's, they're bulky, big pieces of equipment that we need a place to get, get them on. You can't carry them on a normal engine. So we decided that the best thing for, for not only us, but also will save the taxpayer a lot of money, is to just purchase a box truck with a lift gate, commercial cabin chassis, box truck, lift gate, side door, price them out with the worst case being a dually and...
185.
You know, instead of spending a million dollars on a rescue truck, we're spending 185,000. So I've worked that into, to the, to the plan and...
Chief, have you, considering the rest of the replacement of Rescue 1, this box truck that you're suggesting, so is that going to have any other extraordinary devices on it?
Absolutely not.
Lighting?
It'll have some, it'll have some scene lighting, very limited, just for working around. And with the, you know, LED lighting, you can light it up and not have to, you know, worry about, like we did in the past, with large battery banks, large alternators, that kind of thing. So we will spec that into this truck, but it's all included into this.
Gotcha, okay.
This price does include a few things. For instance, we're going to have to customize some of the shelving and outfitting to match the equipment that we're carrying. We have a committee that's working on it. For instance, we have those large vehicle stabilization struts. We're basically designing a dolly where the struts will be kind of on a triangular for stability, right? They'll be on it, because they're long cylindrical objects, right? And then underneath, that'll create spaces, because they have different heads, they have different feet, they have different, all the stuff that can sit in the middle, and basically on a wagon that we're just going to pull to lift it.
Pull out, down lift cap?
Yep, roll right across the road to wherever we need to do it. So that's kind of the plan.
Any outside compartments?
No.
Okay.
No, strictly, it's a strictly commercial box truck.
Okay.
And that's all we need. Everything else is carried on Engine 1, Rescue 2, Rescue 5, and eventually Engine 3.
Let's be responsible.
Yeah.
That's good. On the finance, we also have to consider if appropriate, approve the following request to be included on the Board of Finance agenda for September 30th, 2024. That's what we just voted on for the contingency.
Yeah.
So that's all part of that whole, okay?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. And we have to make a motion here to accept the attached apparatus replacement plan, and if appropriate, approve the additional 500,000. That was appropriation for the replacement of fire Engine 9.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Training, Commissioner O'Hearn?
So since the last month, vehicle fires in confined space have continued, monthly May Day drills are ongoing. The third and final delivery of the Assistance Firefighter Grant-funded Vehicle Rescue Technician Class has concluded. As you may have seen, there's been numerous vehicles out there that have been disassembled and torn apart, and it's all part of that, that training. So a lot of work went into that, and the guys did a good job.
A lot of different types of vehicles too, which is nice.
Yeah.
A shout out to...
Including the school bus.
Yeah, school bus, box trailers. That particular class was very heavy in logistics and trying to obtain all the vehicles and whatnot. So a huge shout out to Deputy Chief Kujma, Deputy Chief Judd, who played big roles in doing all of those logistics, as well as Ricky Hart and others, Chief Kozak, and, you know, certainly the women who participated, but a lot went into it. So my hats off to them, they make our...
Does that include getting them out of here too?
It does include getting them out of here. And I would like to say that, you know, United Tire, you know, is a local tow company here in town. They do both light and heavy towing. But the Pandora family has always fared to this fire department. They've done a lot of things without charge for a lot of these classes. And I just want to say on camera, thank you to United Tire and Towing, and all the other vendors that helped. But, you know, they've been doing that for years, so we appreciate it.
All right. Marine 2 helmsman training is ongoing, and probably a good thing, since they've been a little busy.
Yes.
Marine 2 and Marine 5 went to each Haven the other night. Firefighter Brown has been cleared, has a Marine 2 helmsman. And last, but not, well, two things. Live burn training's been ongoing. And, you know, for the public, that's a, that's a big tax on both our volunteers and career. There's a lot that goes into that training also. And it's, it has to be done every year. Everybody has to be certified every year. So good job by all that's involved in that. There's more training coming up on September 30th and October 7th. And lastly, firefighter Hayes was certified as a pump operator, so she can drive the engine now. Congratulations to her.
Okay. Apparatus, Commissioner LeFlore?
Apparatus. So thankfully, the repair and maintenance account is not one of the accounts that we had to transfer money to.
Yeah.
There's been a little bit less of a report than I have in years past, or in months past, I should say. So Engine 1 is back in service today. There is a repair to the steering box. That was fairly critical. It was actually repaired and then needed to be repaired again, and that's taken apart, and it is in service right now. The new car, 1 and 2 are now in service. Engine, Engine 2 is out of service right now, is having a transmission replaced. Do we have an estimate on that?
We did. We, the original estimate was just over $16,000, but slightly more than four was a core. So it came in at 12,800 and change. I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's pretty close to that.
Yep, that's right.
You know, it was a remanufactured transmission for a vehicle that's 28 years old. So, and we do, we do need it to last for at least for another three...
Engine 2 is 28 years old?
Engine 2 and 4 are 28 years old. We're getting very close to it. And it also has a, that's the other one, Commissioner, that's out, we believe it's probably a head gasket, so it's going to be another price you repair.
The new Engine 9 specs have been completed. We're, we just voted on that, actually, to approve those specs. This is an apparatus that we probably won't see for two years? Year and a half?
Three years.
Three years. But as the chief mentioned earlier, with supply chain, supply and demand, and the busyness of all the apparatus manufacturers, it was prudent of us to preorder it now to get in line, so that we could have it when we need. We won't have it when we need it. We'll have it, but we can't really use our normal ordering procedure, because it takes so long. It used to be a year.
It used to be a year.
Yeah. I mentioned to Commissioner O'Hearn earlier, when I was looking at the price of it, when I first came on the commission, the first Engine 1 Deschamil that we had, that was $300,000, 21 years ago.
And there's a 7%, 7 or 7.5% price increase in November, which is why we're pushing to get it before the Board of Finance on Monday. Because it still has to go to...
Right now, we're up like 20%, would you say, from the Engine 1 we bought two years ago to this one?
Well...
Was it 895?
Probably, probably close to it.
Yeah, I just did the math.
899, yeah.
Yeah, it's about 19%. Yeah, 20%.
And then lastly, the new Medic 2 has arrived. I saw it down there. And earlier, earlier before the meeting, and it's awaiting inspections and new radios to put that in service.
Radios are scheduled for the 14.
Okay.
Can't move that up, huh? They are apparently inundated.
Okay. So that's kind of like the buzz, the world is inundated, isn't it, Chief?
Yeah, but the good news is we finally got the approval for all the state program.
Yeah.
Everything should come in and be done. So it's been a little...
Yeah.
...formatic.
And then I have reps?
That's all, thank you.
Okay. Good job. Okay, EMS, Commissioner Fox?
Well, the ambulance revenue is up another 200,000 from last year, last month, excuse me. And there have been 1,334 EMS incidents since July the 1st this year.
That's it?
To September the 25th. That's it. That's all.
You shouldn't laugh, but...
I know.
If you don't laugh, you're proud, right?
Well, it's interesting that always follows apparatus, and we're talking about wear and tear.
Yeah.
So like combined.
Yeah, right, exactly. And our transportation ratio is up a little bit too, it seems to me.
From last month, yeah.
It usually runs around 70%, now it's up to 74.
Which is the billable end of things, so...
Yeah. Which accounts for the increase in revenue.
The bill for transport.
Yes.
And 17% of it is non-transport and 5% other dispositions. So we continue to be as very, very busy as always.
Yep, always going.
Always.
And my phone has never dinged as much as once I got that app.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can help with that.
We could show you.
Yeah, it's like, boom, boom, boom.
Because you can like filter the calls.
We can actually put a sireen on it if you want, instead of a ding.
Squad 51.
There's a way to do that on the app setting.
Do you have that for your wife? Is that what?
Huh?
That would really be interesting, to have a little siren on it.
Yeah, it is on there.
Oh, no, it is on there.
It's on there. You can do it.
Yeah.
On the app.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll show you how to do it.
Yeah, all right.
Okay. Anything else on EMS? Buildings, Commissioner Compton?
What don't I know? The best I know is a couple of emails telling me that the pothole here at headquarters has been filled. I didn't know we had a pothole.
But the good news is...
We lost some people in it.
We have some...
There's a lot of things...
The chief's reporting the buildings.
We try not to inundate...
Technical rescue control, I believe.
With, you know, all of the details, because you'd be like your phone dinging all the time. But with the conclusion of the fueling facility, which, Commissioner, if you look at my chief's report and the fact that...
That's what caused the 502, you see, and I know.
It could have been.
The construction.
They're, they're finalizing a few things for Public Works, you know, they fixed some of the stuff in the rain garden, they shored up the sidewalk. The sidewalk, there was a tree that had grown. It was never supposed to be there, but it got big and we cut it down and pulled this up. So tore a little bit of, did a little undermining of the sidewalk, so we fixed that. And so little things like that have been getting done for this project, and we appreciate it. Part of the upgrade and with the police department coming over here, we're also getting some additional camera coverage to sort up not only some existing stuff, but two views that we haven't had that were blank spots. So looking down towards the pavilion from the volunteer area, basically due east, and then looking directly at the fueling facility. So all of those are paid for out of the two projects, so we'll be the beneficiary of that.
The one that looks down towards the fueling station, does that also cover the back door to...
So the, one of the ones that is getting replaced is the one that covers the back door to the...
Okay, yeah.
One will, they're basically like panoramic views, so the one that's on the building looking will kind of cover that, and they'll be overlapped from the pole camera that looks across this way, the door camera, and also the one that's going to look east. So hopefully it'll allow us to cover everything we need to see.
And as the chief was showing me, some, some of the stations, two weeks ago, I think it was, talked about the need for personal lockers for Station 9. Are they ordered, not ordered?
They're not ordered yet. I'm, we had a project that was here, done here for the UPS uninterruptible battery supply for the EOC, which is this room doubles as. And it was a project the town was going to do anyways. They, they took old project, put it together to, you know, to fund that project based on the numbers that they had at the time. The, in the meantime, a supplemental ENPG grant came up from the state to enhance your EOC. So this was a project, you know, circle-ready project we had. I threw in an application, we were granted the funds. So I'm hoping that I could use the funds they intended to cover some of these costs that we hadn't been, you know, really budgeted for. And then the other one was the station alerting system, because we, traditionally, the volunteer station didn't have one. The one that's at headquarters is now 12 years old, so if we're going to replace it, we want to make sure that, they can't be different. And we weren't really happy with...
They can't be different?
Well, they can't necessarily, and the company that...
Can't operate that, right?
We don't want to stay with that same company, because they're on the west coast, and it was very difficult when we had any issues. We have to send it back, and it's just a nightmare, they lose it. Nobody knows what's going on in California time, dude. So we're investigating two different vendors right now. We've had pricing back from one, but not from the other. So, and one of them was significantly different than the last time we priced out, so we're going to ask them to sharpen their pencil if they're thinking, if we decide that that's the way to go. But we're not committed to anything yet, so we'll have to bring it before the board and just put it on your radar.
Okay. That is it for Buildings. Under Pension and Communications, nothing on Pension and Communications. Just want to bring out to the public that the local 2533 is hosting the mullets for mutts. That's the Branford Fire Department Union. Saturday this year? I have down on my date, Saturday the 26th from 1:00 to 7:00 at Stony Creek Brewery. So we look for their support, because we can use that support.
It's always a great event.
It's always a great time. It's on our Facebook page too.
Did a really good job last year.
Yeah. So I have the 26th down, but, you know, I'm meeting tomorrow morning. So...
The 26th is 26?
No, the 26th of October, I should say. I'm trying, I'm a month, trying to just promote it again.
We're late.
Trying to just promote it. We can use...
It's been on social media.
About a day late in a dollar, sure.
And we could use the support though, because they have a lot of things they want to do for the canines and stuff, so...
Sure.
Yeah. That's it for Pension and Communications, Chief. And I just want to bring that we do to the public that we get a lot of letters and emails, voicemails, thanking the chief's office on behalf of the men and ladies of the department for the fine job they do for services. So we hear a lot of that, so it's positive. And we thank them for that. I'll go ahead and turn it over to the chief for a chief's report.
Yeah, so just real quick, obviously continue to be busy, 1,740 calls. So far, in the fiscal year, starting July 1st, so Wednesday's now our busiest day. It fluctuates, but generally 11 o'clock ish is the busiest hour for EMS calls, it seems, when a lot of stuff gets ramped up, people are on the move, doctors' offices, et cetera, are open, so that's our busy time. We, in the admin part portion, have been, obviously, as you can appreciate, very busy preparing for the 16 new hires. There's a lot of planning, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff. We were fortunate enough to have received more than 100 applications for this position. We had a good contingent of our existing part-timers who are doing a great job for us. So what we're going to do, we went through the resumes and the cover letters, et cetera, as a team, with the EMS team and Chief Kozak and myself. We decided that for the people that we don't know, the new applicants, not the current part-timers, we're going to bring the ones we felt met our criteria to the best, based on the information we had before us. So we're going to interview them to see if we're interested in moving to a second interview, and that time we'll include everybody. So we have those interviews scheduled. As soon as they conclude, we'll schedule the second part. And we're hopeful that we can hire, you know, and get the contingency offers and all that, hopefully by the end of October. Get through a lot of the human resource logistical stuff, conditional offers, physicals, that kind of thing, and get going hopefully late November, early December. We, we have always kind of had in our minds that maybe January 2nd start date would be, you know, but, but we're paying for this stuff in the meantime, so including the part, you know, the full-timer staff we mentioned on currently. Lot, lot's been going on, that's really been our focus. Anything to add to that?
No, I mean, kind of related is, you know, we have this tracking document I have here if you guys want to look at it. But, you know, there is so many moving parts. It's broken up by personnel issues, contract-related, training-related, equipment-related, dispatch-related, because we're changing our whole operation and how we respond to incidents, and adding, you know, a multi-station model now. So there are a lot of moving parts. This is just to help us track everything. The front page is a summary page of all the main goals, and then the pages behind it are what we need to do to meet those goals, with assignments and target dates and things like that. So it's kind of just like a project management book. If you want to look at it, you can, but it's kind of our internal tool. And then next week, we're, including all our officers, and brainstorming session, hit these things to see if we're missing anything, and get their ideas and inputs as well, so that, you know, everyone's on board as we look forward.
Good. Well, it says a lot if you've got 100 applicants about to bring up the fire department.
It's a big undertaking, but yeah.
But I'm saying, people want to come work for the department.
Yeah, a lot of their cover letters began with that. Now, of course, they're trying to butter this up.
Yeah, I know, but...
Yes, no kidding.
But yeah, we are, we're excited about this.
Because the assistant chief, that's why.
100%?
It's his contact.
Yeah. Well, I recall that we all, when we first started this notion of hiring 16 EMTs, we were, all seemed a bit concerned how many applicants we would get. And it's this great news that we've had so many people interested in it.
Yeah, I was just saying, I didn't realize, you know.
Yeah. No, I agree, we...
Other communities, not the name, but we're struggling that, trying to have the same model.
Well, that's the general sense on the street, is that it's hard to recruit.
Yeah.
We're offering a bit better. Will you still continue with part-time EMTs?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. They have...
We still need that week.
We made that clear during our budget presentations, because, you know, part of what we're doing is to address the decrease in the volunteers, as well as the increase in call volume. But, but, you know, it's response times, it's getting back to being a fire department and not just an EMS department. But we, we know that EMS is a huge part of the business. And those three ambulances that are staffed currently, and one of them being the part-time one, are busy constantly. There is, you know, as we move forward... There is, you know, as we move forward, one of the ways that we feel we might be able to address the need for expanding an ambulance would be during that peak time, like I said. And we look at our peak hours and we staff during the peak hours another, you know, part-time for future expansion, so we're not hiring more full-time staff, right? So that's.
That's kind of what we did back in the, not the beginning, but, you know, 10, 15 years ago.
But the six, the sixteen that you're going to hire will work the same type of shifts as?
As the firefighters, yeah. They're going to be, you know, essentially, like at Station Nine, you're going to have three on the fire engine with an officer, the two EMTs, and that's going to be the company down at Nine. So those people will be a shift, they'll be together. The expectation is that, you know, regardless of what vehicle, they're a team that works together. And the, but the, you know, the truth is that, you know, a lot of about, you know, we, we look at the statistics, about 40% don't require paramedic level care. So we lose our paramedic when we don't need to. So we're covering a bunch of these small issues. We're, we're not losing firefighters when the ambulance leaves like it does now. We're not losing a paramedic. And then we also have a first responder when that ambulance does transport to handle the next medical until we get an ambulance from somewhere else. And have some fire protection, too.
Yeah, well, I think you used example the other day up on Norfolk Road.
Yeah.
Right. You guys, it was like clockwork. Engine Nine came from the back, I mean, everything was like clockwork.
Yeah, and we still, you know, we still have.
Didn't Nine come here to, as backup?
No, Nine went right to the scene.
Yeah, for a structured fire response, they'll go to the scene. We also had a volunteer engine on the air.
Engine Two came on.
And it was a cobbled together group of who was available, so, you know, that's the goal.
Yeah, good. Assistant Chief?
Um, just, you know, in addition to what we talked about there, the payroll project that I spoke about, that's all, all done. We've transferred over from Alad Tech to First Do, which is our records management software. So everything's in that one suite now, which is, which is helpful and has a savings, too, because we're not supporting two, two softwares. So that was a big undertaking, involved everybody because everyone had to learn something new. And it seems to be going well. We didn't have any errors last time, and when we don't get a call from payroll, that's a good thing. That means we did something right, so.
And I, and I'm going to say it again, I know I've said it many times, but it was a big undertaking.
Yeah, no doubt.
Mm-hmm. Kudos to, you know, that was led by Chief Kozak.
Good job, Chief.
It's, it's been successful, so that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to bring up the Fire Marshal's report. You have a copy of it because Fire Marshal Dobinsky does a great job.
He does.
Works along with his deputy there, Eugene Hayes, and other part timers, too. But they will be starting in the schools now for fire prevention for the month of October. But besides that, you can see what they do, how many plan reviews, inspections, fire investigations, and other reports that are reviewed in the Bryser system, which is working good, but let's keep it.
So Bryser's, I mean, you know, maybe not from the perspective of the person who realizes that they shouldn't have been doing these inspections all along. But the truth is, is that the code requires them to do these inspections all along. And it was, it was impossible with the staffing that we have to, to track and find all these people. So Bryser's been a boon. It's making a pretty, you know, makes their job easier, but it really makes for a safer community because the idea is that, you know, the fire code is there for, to protect people. And within the fire code, it requires things like sprinklers and smoke alarms and hydrants. You know, there's a lot of private hydrants in town that we found out for many, many years were not getting inspected. And a lot of these condominium associations didn't realize that that was part of their responsibility. So we try, you know, we've tracked down a lot of the, the contact. That's a lot of what, in the, the time it takes, is tracking people down because they're owned by LLCs and various parties. And, and, you know, if it gets to being an abatement process, we have to identify the actual owner. So it's, it's been great, and Rob and his team does a great job, so.
It actually keeps the, the tech people going out and doing the inspections in line because they have to physically go in and input this for the inspection. I've caught so many that I'll get something from the Bryser to me, and I'm like, I already paid for that to be done. And I call up the people and they're like, I said, well, but it'll happen again because this is like twice now. But they just.
So it's checked the balance.
They're getting lazy, yeah. So it keeps them from being lazy, so it's working good. Good job, Fire Marshal. Okay, old business, anything on the agenda? Old business left over? I don't have anything. Did we call anything, Chief?
Not too much.
Okay, new business?
We have enough on our plate, thank you.
I will just say that we have received a budget number that has been forwarded on for Station Three for the project from soup to nuts. So it's been given to the finance director so they can look at, you know, what their bean count is, how they proceed to work on that, so.
Yeah, and it, it always seems that, you know, when we, we get our initial pricing on these projects that it, it's more than, you know, we anticipate. But a lot of that is, is timing and the numbers that we have at the time.
And less than you pay by the time it's done.
It's, it's kind of like, a lot of equipment.
So.
It was like 6.4.
So they, the.
72, 8,000 square feet.
We work with a local company and they, they did a fantastic job for us. And we sent that document on to the first selectman, like you said, and the finance director. And I'm sure once we get some feedback from them, we'll discuss it more. But it's, it's on the radar and it's, it is phased through.
Yeah, we have to just keep kicking it.
Yeah.
And that has, that had a lot built into it, to our equipment and stuff that.
Lot of thousands, wasn't it?
Well, stuff that we want everything covered, so it's like.
We, we want to make sure that we, we don't do that.
Yeah.
Right.
It kind of moves the program and everything together, yeah.
Similar to Station Nine?
What, a lot more involved.
Well, it's bigger. It's going to be.
8,000, right?
Uh, three bays, uh, three bays.
8,000 square feet.
More than that.
Could be more than?
Yeah.
I think it was, what, 14?
14,000?
Floor space?
In the second floor and then you had the down below.
Yeah, it's two stories.
That was all the, everything in soup and nuts.
So 14,000?
So two bays, Commissioner, two bays were, are deep enough to get a ladder truck in.
Okay, good.
Whether we have that or not, but we wanted to plan for it.
Yeah.
And with that, you can still have good flow around them, so it's not like tight in there and people are tripping over everything. And then one bay will be able to get two ambulances back to back with the same thing. And then we covered things like, you know, storage, the shop, the gym, you know, that, all of those features, watchroom on the first floor. And then upstairs is strictly just, you know, dorm rooms, open forest, van kitchen.
Kitchen, yeah.
It's, it's a very tentative plan right now, but, you know, we had to come up with what we wanted, come up with the programming of spaces.
Who came, how did you, how did you get the six, how'd you get the number?
Well, we took the available space that we had on the, on the site and.
Multiplied by square footage?
Well, I.
Or you took it?
Yeah, so it was, the building was roughly, what, 80 by 100?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, 800.
But, and then.
So we're going to use the existing building, right? We're not knocking it down and.
There's no building.
No building.
There's no building.
So what we got is we got, you know, here's the building you could fit on here. Can't get a larger building, so we wanted to maximize it because, you know, as we know, here, space is already limited. So we'd like to move some of the ancillary stuff around so we get a little bit more of the space back. People don't realize this building, you know, for being 12 years old, is maximized.
I noticed that walking around.
You know, not these public spaces, but the apparatus bay, you know, the, the mezzanines, the storage. There, there really wasn't a lot of storage in this, surprisingly, for a building this, this size, so.
It's 11,200 square feet.
Okay.
That'll be the size of the building.
Yep.
At the, I mean, like you said, this time, that's the, the estimate. That'll meet our needs, for sure, you know, but with a little bit of, you know, we don't want to build something that we're already maxed at.
Right.
So that was the plan.
Will there be a pole to slide down from the door?
There will be something, Commissioner. It's, it's.
I know, that's very important.
Probably not a pole.
Not a pole.
Probably not. A slide.
Unless you went broke, broken ankles.
And the number we got, that included like a lot of stuff, all the soft costs and everything, so.
Yeah, okay. So it's a good, it's a good number.
We have built-in contingencies and everything.
Yeah, and the. So we're not going to come back and say it's going to be 7 billion, you know what I mean?
Back to contingency.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, again, it depends on how things move.
Yeah.
You know, either talking about. But we, you know, we're, just for the record, we're not planning to, you know, appropriate any monies next year, but other than maybe some design and so we can get, so we can make sure that.
So we didn't appropriate anything for design yet.
There is nothing.
This was all done gratis for us. It's a, it's a pretty detailed report to what we got. It's not like it's, it's, it's as if it was a real bid.
Yes.
Done, real big, done professionally, so. It wasn't scrappy, it was really, it's, it's big.
Chief, we could pay for it out of our.
Yeah, yeah.
Our ambulance revenue.
Yeah, for three years.
Give it to us for a few of those years, we'd be good to go, right?
Yeah, it was our ambulance revenue.
That's it. We'll pay for it ourselves.
The Board of Finance and Mr. Finch are very aware and, you know, we talk about it a lot. But, you know, a lot of the money that ends up in that, you know, that gives us that extra money and, and the fund balance and whatnot is not just, you know, extras, but that ambulance revenue that we brought in almost 2.4 this year, so that's awesome.
Yeah.
And we're on track.
Yeah, I, we saw a, a fairly larger bump because remember we had that Medicaid issue where the money was getting delayed? So it may even, when the auditors get done, might apply even more.